Call this meeting of the Northwest Board of Education to order. Chris, could you call the roll?
Mrs. Detsel.
Here.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Mr. Detsel.
Here.
Mr. Heather.
Here.
Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everyone's received a copy of the minutes from the May 23 meeting. Do I have a motion?
The Treasurer and Superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the minutes as listed.
Some moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and are there any additions or corrections? Okay, Chris, call the roll. Motion passes five to zero.
All right, at this time, I would like to introduce Brenda Miller, back at the beginning of the meeting. Brenda is our Assistant Director of Curriculum and Instructional Accountability, and she will provide an update on our K-8 MAP data for the 215-216 school year.
Good evening, everyone. Excited to be here with you this evening to give you a sneak preview of our 2015-16 MAP data. You've heard principals all year long come up and talk about their building goals and how they're using MAP data as a benchmark to figure out, are their students growing? Are they achieving at the levels they need to achieve? We know with confidence in this district that this particular assessment, the MAP assessment, is highly correlated with our state assessments. We've seen that now. We're in our third year of administering it to K-8 students in reading and MAP, and we've seen that as we've looked at it three times per year, and we continue to make sure that this assessment is giving us good information. Mr. Bowling asked me to come in this evening and just share with you some of the celebrations we see in our data from the 15-16 school year. One of the statistics that all of the principals who spoke with you this year talked about was the percentage of students making projected growth or meeting projected growth. The NWEA system uses this statistic to indicate what average growth looks like for students at a particular grade level, in a particular subject, and for a particular point in time, so fall, winter, or spring. I said earlier, this is our third year administering the assessment, and what we see is a steady increase in the percentage of our students in grades K through eight for reading and MAP that are meeting or exceeding that growth projection, so that's making at least average growth, if not more. When we began this assessment three years ago, you can see that we had 43 percent of our students that were meeting or exceeding in math, K to eight, and we had 48 percent in reading. The national average is about 50 to 60 percent. This is an average growth, so it makes sense that it would be within that range. We know that in order to close any type of achievement gap, we have to get beyond that 60 percent. So after three years, we are seeing that we are getting to that place. Steady growth, where we have 60 percent of our students who met or exceeded that growth projection for reading, K through eight, and 63 percent for math. So we're very excited about that. We believe that we will begin to see that translating to growth on our local report card. That data actually, for third grade reading, comes out, they're saying now tomorrow, and for the rest of students, comes out at the end of June, on the 28th. So we'll be looking very closely to see if we start to see, and we expect to see, that that growth starts to show improvement on our report card, even if it doesn't yet translate to meeting indicators and achievement. We have to start with growth, and we've been preaching that to our principals and our teachers all year because we have to continue to make steady growth if we want to get to those achievement goals that we all share. This is showing you that in certain grade levels, we actually had even more than that 60 percent meeting the expected growth target. Seventh and eighth grade in particular for reading were highlights, where 67 percent of students met or exceeded in the seventh grade, and 72 percent in the eighth grade. I chose to put kindergarten on this chart because you've heard a lot of concern about kindergarten all year, and I share that concern. But what you see there is that they've almost doubled the percentage of students meeting or exceeding from 13, 14 to 15, 16 for reading. You see that same pattern in kindergarten for math. In fact, they're up to 54 percent meeting or exceeding. I believe as we move to full-day kindergarten, as we continue to look at the standards and really understand the rigor of what's expected in the new kindergarten, we will continue to see that number grow up. Here you see in first, second, sixth, seventh, and eighth were over that 60 percent mark, so that's students again making at least expected growth, if not more. We have some celebrations in our subgroup of our students with disabilities. We see this in both reading and math, where we have large percentages of our students with disabilities who are also meeting or exceeding their growth projection. This is just highlighting in the first, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade that we had 71 percent, 60 percent, 61, 65, so up over where we want to be and continue to grow. We know that these students need to make more than expected growth in order to close existing achievement gaps, and what's exciting is when you look at math, you're starting to see that growth translating into higher levels of achievement. So if you look at first grade, we know that 67 percent of those students met or exceeded their growth projection, but we also see that they grew from having an average national percentile rank in the fall of the first percentile to the 11th percentile by the spring. That's a really significant difference, and we believe that that's a trend we want to see continue as these students move through school. You see similar jump second grade, 10th to 30th, fourth grade, first to fourth, and eighth grade, second to fourth. Obviously, the fourth percentile is not going to get it done on our state assessments, but it's definite progress, and it's something that we can celebrate. We also saw some celebrations for reading and math for our students who have limited English proficiency. Over 60 percent of our LEP students from fall to spring met their growth projection in math for all grades, K to eight, and in reading, we saw that they met over 60 percent in grades one, two, five, six, seven, and eight. Really exciting celebration, middle schools getting it done. Over 75 percent of our LEP students at the middle schools in reading met or exceeded their fall-to-spring growth projection. So that's a huge success for the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers, as well as the Transitioning to talking about achievement, because you want to ultimately see this translate to us having higher percentages of kids scoring proficient on the state exams, you're starting to see when you look at this that we're having more students who are scoring close to that 50th percentile on average in reading. We know the new gain, the new bar, appears to be around the 60th percentile. When we look at the alignment between the MAP assessments and the state assessments that have come out thus far, we know that that bar is higher, that our students have to get over to be highly likely to score proficient on state exams. So when you look at this data, you see in eighth grade, you've got 63, the average national percentile rank is the 63rd percentile. Third grade, we know will be receiving those scores hopefully tomorrow. They're at the 65th on average national percentile rank. Obviously, averages are skewed by lots of high scores or lots of low scores, so this is just kind of big picture of where we are, but we're pleased with what that looks like, particularly when you look back across last year, our third graders in the spring were at the 40th, the year before at the 47th. So we're in a different place going into those spring state assessments than we were the last two years. This is math, similar comments here. One of the things that I think is a celebration is if you look at our data prior to this year, we had grade levels that were definitely below the 30th national percentile on average, and this year, we don't have any grade levels, if you look back at reading or math, that are down in those single digits, 10s, 15s, low 20s. Actually, the lowest we see is that 34th percentile in sixth grade. Even there, that's significantly higher than it was in the fall, so we're pleased with the gains that we're seeing with achievement. Just a couple of highlights on subgroups for achievement. Our Hispanic subgroup did really well on the assessments this year for reading. When you look at the subgroup, there's still, you see some paint copying out there for 15, 16 in reading, but when you look at where they started, you definitely see some significant improvements. This is their math data for the Hispanic subgroup. Again, we're not seeing anybody below the 30th with the exception of kindergarten here in the spring. Lots of grade levels making ten or more percentile rank gains, which is a lot from fall to spring, where if students made typical growth, we would expect them to stay at or about the same percentile rank, and so the fact that they're moving is a celebration. Our gifted subgroup, this group obviously starts very high in achievement. What we want to make sure is that they're not losing ground, that they're actually growing and making progress. So what we see here is that in math for third, fifth, sixth, and eighth grade, we actually see a gain. So third graders started with, on average, at the 95th percentile in math, finished at the 97th. You see fifth grade, 98 to 99, can't go any higher than the 99, at least that's what they report to us, although they tell us now you can, but I'm not sure about that. Sixth, 95th to 96, eighth, 97 to 99, so achieving at very high levels, and actually, this subgroup is still showing growth. When you look at reading, look at the percent of students meeting their growth projection, the teachers will tell you it's very difficult sometimes for students when they're at these very high levels to continue to show growth, and yet, we're seeing here that our students are doing that, our gifted students. Celebration in kindergarten, when you look at the percentage of students, you have 27 gifted identified students in our kindergarten across the district. 70 percent of them, or 71 percent for the past two years, have met their growth projection in reading. This is just a little sharing, exciting news with preschool. We have never given the MAP assessments to preschool. In fact, the assessments are not normed for the preschool, but our preschool principal, Barb Hill, said, hey, I want to give it a try. I think it would be valuable for my students, before they go to kindergarten, to see the assessment, for my teachers to see the assessment, and just to get exposure to it, if nothing else. Well, not only did they get exposure, but they actually did quite well. We had 61 percent of our preschoolers who scored at or above the fall kindergarten arm for the fall in math, so they were above the 50th percentile already going in, and 70 percent in reading. Our preschool has consistently gotten very high ratings, and I think it's really exciting that we're adding an additional preschool teacher, which allows us to bring in this next year, 40 to 48 more preschool students who can benefit from the high-quality experience that's offered. Where do we go next? This is what I shared with our principals at our last principal meeting. They're going to be working this summer with me and with each other to look at their building data, what I'd shared with you is the district data, and to figure out, you know, where are we, to make sure that it aligns with the state results that are coming in, and set some goals for the 17, 16, 17 school year coming up. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Brenda, do you think that the all-day kindergarten will make a big difference for their kids going into first and second grade, you know, carrying that through?
Yeah, the research says that it's what we do with that extra time, right? So if we just use that extra half a day for additional recess time, and we don't really focus and target intervention, we won't necessarily see results just because of the extra time, but we're working very hard, and we plan to all year, to plan what that curriculum will look like for students moving from the half day to the full day. So to answer your question, Jim, yes, I do. I do think so. We're going to do it right, and we're going to make sure that our students are really maximizing the time that they're with us in kindergarten.
No, I think everything, I think everything looks great, and I saw, obviously, you had the, you know, broken down by gifted and students with disabilities and whatnot. The new federal laws are going to require even more disaggregation, and that's going to make it even more challenging, but it'll also allow us to pinpoint more accurately some subgroups when we have, let's see, military children, migratory children, and, oh, homeless in foster care.
Right, so you know, the goal is to make sure that every child is growing and that we're addressing the needs of every child, and so that's where disaggregated data becomes really important to us, make sure that we're not leaving anybody behind, so to speak.
Brenda, I've got a question. You noticed that they're designating the kids that, kindergarteners, as gifted. I don't remember it being so young years ago. How, when are they, is that the first point where they can be designated as gifted, is as a kindergartner, and how would they do that, since you can't really test a kindergartener?
Most of our gifted identifications actually do come through the MAP assessments.
Okay.
The students need to score at the 95th percentile or higher on the reading or map assessment. Students who might be close to that are allowed to, parents are allowed to request individual assessments, but generally, we use that MAP assessment. We do universally screen for gifted superior cognitive identifications in the third and fifth grade, and so that students automatically, every student has the opportunity to get that identification, but if a parent says, hey, I really think my kid is there, and we have other data to suggest that they can be tested earlier than that for the superior cognitive identification as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We are lucky enough to have a second presentation. Darrell Yader is going to talk in summary about the members of his team who attended a seminar at Georgetown University. He will present a summary of projects implemented as a result of this partnership, and he will introduce our partners, which we are very grateful for and very appreciative of everything they've added to this, so I'll turn it over to Darrell.
Okay, so in the fall, we were lucky enough to be part of a school justice reform project at Georgetown University, and this was actually brought to us by Elaine Fink from Legal Aid, who called and said, there's this opportunity, do you know about it? And that started the entire ball rolling, so in some respects, this is her fault, and we thank her for that. So when this came to us, we had a conversation about, is this something we need to be involved in, and we unequivocally said yes, and we ended up forming a team that went to Georgetown University to study this whole idea of school justice reform, inter-agency collaboration, and support systems to help students succeed. And so myself, Paulette Crowley, Assistant Director of Student Services, Susan Smith, Principal of Northwest High School, and Lindsay Gibson, who is our district social worker, were part of our school team. We included Dean Dorfline, who is our School Resource Officer from Corrin Township, who is housed at Northwest High School with Susan. Elaine Fink from Legal Aid Society went with us, and we collaborated with Carla Gunther, who is a chief magistrate with Hamlin County Court System, and she also attended, so that we could really have in-depth conversations about how do we collaborate beyond a single entity to support students in an educational setting. So we went to Georgetown, and they're going to come up and help me with this presentation because I only represent a piece of the puzzle of this mosaic that kind of came together out of this experience. So we went as a team and spent from September 28th to October 2nd there. We looked at topics. They had panels of researchers and practitioners from all over the country who were there. It was thought-provoking, it was engaging. We talked about culture and change leadership, family and youth engagement, cross-systems policies, and school-based practices. And all of that jargon boiled down into an experience that we were able to come back with some concrete steps of what we wanted to do to improve the climate and culture of our school, and I'm going to let Elaine talk about her perception and experience with being there with us.
Thank you. Thank you, Darrell, for the opportunity to contribute to this presentation. I need to say that going back to July 2015, I was really impressed that this district wanted to take the opportunity to apply for participation in the school justice partnership and to invite me to be on the team. So I wanted to just add, I didn't say I was a mandatory part of it. I was given the district the opportunity to do it, but I really appreciated that I was a part of it. And in fact, those five days together were simultaneously difficult, challenging, and rewarding. It turns out that there were immense spinoff benefits to intense hours together. We not only were sitting basically at the same table every day, working toward creating a project plan, some days we were eating three meals a day together, and honestly, I believe we were often spending the short break time chatting together. So we, it turns out, there's nothing like immersion to build bridges, and we were actually able to identify shared goals, priorities, and we had the opportunity to get to know each other as individuals and to work on a joint plan. I would say that we each probably expanded and extended our antennae, and through the increased understanding, we established trust. That trust enabled us to go forward so that by the time we left Georgetown, we had agreed upon action steps designed to secure results for your district and in our community. This past year, Northwest Schools has moved comprehensively with incredible speed and effectiveness, in my view, toward implementing the initiatives on which we all agreed were our priorities when we left there in early October, and I am proud and honored to work with this district, and the leadership of the district, to continue to tackle the difficult issues that you face and all of us in the community face. So, thank you.
So Elaine spoke of the shared vision and the projects that we worked on together. So out of that, we narrowed down our scope into what we thought was going to be feasible, albeit ambitious, but feasible. So out of that week, there were three projects that we said we wanted to work on the rest of this school year from that experience. One was developing a diversionary court that we coined our SAFE Council because it, court was a little bit more punitive, and it was for us more about support and wrapping around families and students to figure out how we could improve outcomes for them, not punish them away. So we called it our SAFE Council, our Student and Family Engagement Council, and that was a collaborative partnership between us and the court system and some social service agencies to develop that system, and we'll talk about that in a moment. We wanted to make sure that we had a single point of contact because too often, too many people in the mix create confusion and things get dropped or lost through cracks, and we wanted to make sure there was one person who owned the ability to kind of track some of our at-risk and high-risk students, and then we wanted to address how we bring in restorative practices as a way to shift the culture and climate of the district in a more supportive and organized way. So to start with, we'll talk about the SAFE Council. We developed this partnership with Hamlin County Juvenile Court. Carla Gunther was key in that, so as one of our participants there and someone who represented the court system, she was able to kind of help work through how that diversionary court that we call SAFE Council was going to be established, and she had experience with getting this started in other districts. It's an unofficial docket that I will let our hearing officer explain in a moment. We started with truancy cases because we wanted to deal with something that was right now, something that we dealt with in a high volume that we could start with and then build upon success. We wanted to make sure that when we dealt with truancy, truancy is a lot of times a symptom, not a cause, and we had a lot of other things that we had to fix with truancy. There's typically academic issues as well that are wrapped into that, sometimes discipline issues, so we have to kind of figure out how to treat the root cause. We came back in October, and through a lot of collaboration and talking, we were able to locate a place where we were going to hold this, and we started doing it twice a month. In February, we held our first one, and we agreed to hold these SAFE councils twice a month, and we ended up having a referral process, the way the court processed it to get it to the unofficial docket. We, as a district, committed resources to this, so Paulette was able to secure the Corrin Township chambers as our location for where we hold our meetings. They are on Fridays. Deana Naderman is our court representative, who is the hearing officer. Tiffany Smith is the case manager that accompanies her every time we have a hearing. Matt Pyne, our enrollment supervisor, who also oversees a lot of the truancy and enrollment for the district, is there at, they do this all day on a Friday, and he's there the entire day with them with all of the cases. Sean Mayer, our truancy officer, is there as well. Paulette Crowley is there. We have Lindsay Gibson, our district social worker there, so if families are in need of support, she's there to identify resources and allocate those resources and connect families to resources. We also have a partnership that we've talked about in the past with Camila Community Care for mental health services within the district. We have a representative from that organization who attends all of these hearings as well, so if a family is struggling with any kind of mental health services, they can immediately be connected with a representative who can sign them up and get them connected to services immediately. And then whenever a student is brought into this setting with their family members, the principal from that building and a counselor, if there's one available, is at the hearing as well. So there's a huge group that is there to support, identify, and really get to the root cause of the problem and fix the problem. So since February, we've heard 171 truancy cases, cases that in the past would have been just sent down to 800 Broadway, processed, and done. We've heard 171. 140 of those cases have appeared before this SAFE Council more than once. We've only had 32 that didn't show, and 28 have already been dismissed because 23 were successfully, they worked through a plan and found success and put interventions in place that worked, and five withdrew from the district. So we've had some success with this already. I'm going to let Susan Smith and Deana Naderman talk about the SAFE Council and the reflection on the process, as well as Susan's going to talk about some of the family perspectives that she's been able to witness.
So when we first started this process, actually about 10 years ago, I had gone to Princeton High School to observe this process in action because we were looking, we were having trouble with truancy at that time, and I just, at the time, said, oh my gosh, this would be great in our district, and so 10 years later, it's a reality. But from a principal's perspective, it's wonderful, and we, I know Paulette and I were sitting in the room, we're like, it's just going to take the right person as our hearing officer. It's going to take somebody who understands families and who can be harsh if need be, and who can understand, you know, and sympathize, and Paulette, and I'm like, it's just going to be the right person. And then we met Deana, and she's 100 percent the right person. She's made kids cry, she's made parents cry, but then she's also sympathized with them and explains to them, this doesn't exist in other districts. This is unique to your district, they're trying to help you. So she gives them the other perspective, which is, they could have just sent this downtown. So I would say of the 140 cases that she's seen, I've probably had 40 to 45 of them. I've monopolized the docket for sure, but that's just because I believe in this process going through Georgetown and having that experience, and thank you, Darrell, for inviting me, was wonderful, and so I wanted to get Northwest students in front of her, and so we see a lot of each other on Fridays, and we've gotten to know each other very well. So just for Mr. Detsel, I want to spend the next half hour to an hour telling you all of the wonderful stories. No, I just want to give one success story, which is, well, of the 40 kids or so, six of them were seniors, and it sounds like, why would you have seniors going to, you know, diversionary court, but they weren't going to graduate, they weren't coming to school. There was a variety of reasons, there was things at home, there was things at school, but, you know, we're working really hard to improve our graduation rate, so I was sending seniors. And I looked today, there were six seniors, and all six of them graduated in May. So it's working, the process is working. But one story in particular, there was a student who, in the fall, had a baby and just stopped coming, managing school and her home life and her newborn. She was just like, I'm giving up. I'm close to 18, I'm just going to drop out, and sorry, I'm going to be a mom. So we talked to her, and we put her through this process, and we actually enrolled her in Northwest Passage so that she could have a shorter school day, and she was only a junior in terms of credits in the fall, and she got through everything quickly, she got focused. got focused, she met Deana and was like, I can't keep going back to court, I'm a mom now, and she graduated. So it works, it's, there's many stories just like hers, and as a principal, there's things I find out in her courtroom that I don't find out at school. So, you know, when mom shows up and they explain why they're not getting to school, it's not just because they don't want to be there. There's a plethora of reasons why a student isn't coming, those all come out. So we, we don't just say, well, sorry that you're not coming to school, the whole team in the room says, let's get a plan to find out how we can get you to school. So as a principal, it's been wonderful, kids will come by and say, will you tell the judge that I'm doing better, or will you tell the judge that I was here today? And I say, yes, I will, I will. So it's been working, and it's a great thing for our kids in our district as a principal perspective. So I'll turn it over to Deana.
Hi, my name's Deana Naderman. I am the Director of Special Projects with Juvenile Court, and Carla Gunther approached me early in January, I believe, and said, I have a project that I'd like you to, to be a part of. And met with the folks originally at Northwest and heard about this project and was really excited about it. I do truancy hearings for some other districts in our county, and I thought, okay, well, this can kind of be like that, but I'm hoping it's different. And what I've seen is, it is unbelievably different. And the reason that I feel that it's different than others and is successful, as you're hearing, is because, first of all, the dedication from Northwest School District. You guys obviously decided that you wanted to put some resources towards this issue. And as you saw from the list of people that come just from the schools, those folks are there day in and day out with me, working through this problem. And I don't think we would see the success if I didn't have the principals at the building, if I didn't have Paletta, if I didn't have Matt, if I didn't have the police officer there. We don't have that in other districts, and I don't think our numbers are anywhere close. So it's not me, it's the group as a whole that's doing this. Part of the role that I see for myself is, I'm kind of the, I'm kind of the hub that brings everybody together. They feel like they have to come because we do kind of couch it in more of an official-type feeling. It's not located on school grounds, they get official paperwork that tell them they have to show up, so that kind of gets them in the door. And once I get them in the door, then I can, you know, explain to them that this is an opportunity. You could have gone downtown and you could have had an official charge, but your principal said that there's something about you that's redeemable and that they can work with, and so we gave you this chance. And so I kind of couched it in that way of, wow, lots of other kids, they just go straight downtown, but, you know, she said that she really thinks that you're workable. And I think that that kind of opens their ears. And then what it allows them to do is start having dialogue. I feel like it's a very open communication throughout the hearing. There's a little bit of an official stuff in the beginning where I kind of explain what it is and what their rights are, and do they want to admit, and do they not, and that kind of thing. But then we just start talking about, why are you not going to school? And the thing that's very beneficial to me is to have someone like Susan sitting there so that when the kid says, well, I didn't go to school because I was bullied and the school didn't do anything about it, I can say, really? Miss, can you tell me why? Nothing was done? And she'll say, well, remember, Joey, you know, you came to me and we put this plan in place, and remember, you were going to do this and this, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's not the reason, so let's talk now. So I have that ability to look at the team and say, can you refute what the family's saying, or can you tell me something different? And in other localities, I don't. It's just the parent, the kid, and myself. And so when they say that they're not getting the services and they're not getting the attention, I don't have anything to say differently. Now I do, I do have that ability to look at the team and say, what have you all done to address this issue? And then more importantly, I can say, well, how can we move forward? That's water in the bridge, that's the past. How do we move forward to get you to where you want to be? Everybody wants you to go to school, how do we get you there? And then we come up with a plan, and then it's put in writing through an entry that I create right then and there, and so they have their marching orders going, going forward. The other thing that I think is beneficial to this project is the ability to bring them back before me, so there's accountability. So they're sitting in front of me saying, yes, I'll go to school every day, and yes, I'll do this, and the parent will say, I'll do that. Well, then they have to come back in a month in front of the whole team and explain whether they did it or they didn't. And if they did, they get congratulations and kudos, and if they didn't, then we have to look at a different plan. So that's kind of my synopsis of what it is that we're doing. As I said, I do this in other districts, and this is, this has been the best experience for me because it really is a collaborative approach. And again, if Northwest hadn't dedicated those resources, hadn't said, it's important for our principals to be there, it's important for our, you know, administrative folks to be there, then I don't think we would be seeing the success that we're, that we're seeing. It's not me, it's all around me. Thank you.
We started with twice a month, and they came to us after about a month and a half and said, this, we need more. So we started adding a third day a month. They're hearing cases all the way through the end of June, and they'll start hearing them before school starts so that we can get back on that track and get families engaged before school actually starts to make sure those habits and plans are still in place. For the next school year, they've already said, we want it every week. Every single Friday, we're going to have the Safe Council operating at full speed. Increasing our capacity to support our students. We're going to actually go beyond truancy, and when our school resource officers are involved with students at the school level and the possibility of adding disorderly conduct charges to a fight, those disorderly conduct charges will be diverted to this council as well so that we can get to the root cause of the anger and the conflict and actually put strategies in place to stop that behavior from happening again. So we're also going to have someone who follows up with the successful cases because we want to make sure they stay successful. The other two items that we said we were going to do out of that week was have a single point of contact, which is Lindsay Gibson. So Lindsay Gibson has been working with foster care facilities, she's been working with Hamlin County Juvenile Family Services, she's been working with the court system to have access to their database with the police departments so that if students, because the research shows that students who are involved in multiple agencies are at higher risk for at-risk behavior and for dropping out and for academic issues and truancy issues, so Lindsay has been monitoring students who might be in multiple agencies so that she can keep track of and identify early students that might have issues so we can be proactive in dealing with those issues from a resource perspective instead of a punishment perspective. We also are going to be bringing restorative practices into our district. Restorative practices is a program that creates a common language for culture. It is out of the International Institute for Restorative Practices in Pennsylvania. We have a group of administrators and teachers who will be trained in June in this and as trainers, so that we have 24 people certified as trainers who will then, this fall, begin training all of our staff, all of our teachers, all of our administrators, our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, our secretaries, our board, our PTAs, so that we have a common language of what it means to be respectful in our district. From the restorative practices group, they talk about this, developing relationships among organizations and constituents so that we function more effectively. The use of restorative practices reduces behavior, bullying, violence, because it gives us a strong foundation of what respect is, a common language of how you define that in your building and what that looks like in a concrete way, so that we have a common language of understanding how to develop and build those respectful relationships that create that culture of learning that we want. So those three initiatives have been really kicked into high gear this year. So like I said, we're going to be training all through the next school year on restorative practices. I want to give Carla Gunther, who was one of our members who went to Georgetown with us, the magistrate from Hamlin County Court System, an opportunity to give some final thoughts on where we as a district are from her outside perspective. I say outside, but she is a Colrain alum.
So Scott Williams was actually going to appear today, and he is at a statewide judicial conference, and he wanted you all to know he would much rather be here than hiring 50 judges. But just to give you a little bit, I mean, Hamilton County Juvenile Court has had the good fortune of being a national model court, recognized by the National Council of Juvenile Family Court Judges, in the model dependency, which is the child protection or the kids that are in foster care system, as well as in the juvenile justice system. And it's really a misnomer. It's not that we are the best court in the country, it's really that we have a rich history of partnering with public and private entities to improve the way we handle the child protection and juvenile justice cases. And I really think this initiative that we have done with Northwest School District is really a highlight in why our community really has been ahead of all of the other jurisdictions in handling these types of issues. One of the things, when I talk to my counterparts in the model court projects, because there are a number of jurisdictions who are committed to sort of reforming their practice and making improvements, every single district really struggles, or every single jurisdiction, court jurisdiction, really struggles to get schools at the table to work collectively with them to improve these outcomes. And so everyone's always amazed that we've been able to do that here in Cincinnati, and I just think that there's such a good history in our community to do that. I think the other really nice thing is that this is a project certainly from the court's perspective that we think is worthy of replication. We're already in a dialogue with another district to try to replicate the good work that you're doing here, so it's one of our other large urban jurisdictions, because we really think this is a model, and we've been asked to come back to Georgetown University in the fall, I've been asked to come back as a faculty person to sort of report out on some of the successes we've had here and share nationally with the work that's happening here in Northwest. So I think that's also very exciting. The other thing for our group is we just acknowledged today that we are now Georgetown fellows, so we can add that to our space.
All right.
So Georgetown right out of the state. So again, I just want to commend the district for really having this much, or this many partners really from your district, working with us so hard to really improve this effect rate for kids in your district. I think the other thing that we know as a court, that when kids are in school and they have good connections to their school, they're not coming in the front door of our system. And for that, we are really grateful. So again, just want to applaud you all. Thank you.
And one final comment is that we actually, getting notoriety and being recognized for this, in the annual report for the Legal Aid Society, there is a write-up about the project that we've been doing in collaboration with the court and with Legal Aid and the progress we've been making. So any questions about where we are or where we're going?
If I could add a little, just a couple of things, and then you guys can ask. I just want everybody to be reminded, this is a result of the almost lawsuit that occurred a couple of years ago at Colrain High School, and I happen to have the recommendations of the consultants who the judge ordered to come and lead us through a presentation at Colrain High School on a Friday and Saturday. And there's two ways we could have looked at that. We could have said, two kids showed up, asked a lot of questions, maybe four parents, and then the speaker hired a lot of people to sit in the audience, and we could have just washed our hands of it. But we knew we have issues that we need to address, and we need to support our parents, we need to support our students, and the recommendations that came out was develop a strategic building and cultural respect plan, his number one request, district leadership retreat, summer in-service, establish measurable and short, long-term goals, some of the parents, parent consultation in crisis at the earliest possible moment. In other words, don't wait till you get a group of 15 doing something, start to put plans in place where you can address individuals. I think it started as a truancy court, it will go to a much higher level with other issues that are going on there, so I think we've become, or we're headed in a direction to accomplish that. We did not hire a diversity coordinator, but this is our diversity coordinator. It is a group who has been empowered, who went to Georgetown, and I would get texts and emails through the day, and there were struggles going on and some banging of heads, but, you know, it's really come together. And I hope all of you know how much we appreciate your involvement, and we will continue to work with you any way we can. And Susan and the principals, just their ability to get there and making it a priority is huge for this. So we want to put plans in to support them also, but I think we really hit what we needed to do and what the consultant and what the parents recommended we do. Darryl and his group has done a great job of leading this, and I think the result of what has occurred accomplished exactly what we wanted to.
I just want to say, I know I'm always quick to say my favorite presentations are always, I'm always getting on everybody, we want the kids to present, the kids to present. In all the years on the board, this is probably one of the most powerful presentations, and it, it just makes me feel so proud, the difference we've already made with kids. And I wish I would have known, because I would have loved to have hugged those ones at graduation when I handed them the diploma, because you all made a huge difference in their lives, and that's what we're all here for, so thank you.
I'd like to congratulate everybody on the team that's done such a great job with this, and, you know, we really appreciate what you do for our kids, and this is a great program. I did see one thing in there, there were like 32 people who didn't show up or were referred somewhere else. What, I mean, what if they weren't referred somewhere else and they just didn't show up? What happens to those people?
If they don't show up, they typically will reschedule them for another one, but then, Car- or Deana always has the discretion to refer them to official court, so they lose their opportunity to participate in this unofficial process, and then they go official. And even if a case is being heard in the unofficial, but they're not making progress and they're not getting where they want to go, then she always has the opportunity to refer it back to an official docket and push it down to 800 Broadway. Thank you.
And I just want to say, a lot of times it's bad addresses or they didn't get our people work. And again, another benefit of this process is we have Matt Pining, and we also have the officers of Colrain, who they will frequently take the notices and try and serve the families. We don't have their debt anywhere else. We have a normal truancy docket, we have anywhere from a 40 to 50% no-show rate, where those just end up getting warrants, and that's not resolving the problem.
Right.
Having that team that will actually go out and try and find those folks and serve them with the people work and get them into meet is, I think, part of the success we're seeing.
Well, it's huge. It's huge that they have, they have resources available in the meeting for them, so, yeah, that's, that's big.
A couple of meetings ago, there was some angst or concern about one of the state mandates and how they were changing how we handle truancy cases. It seemed like we were going to have to go out and create a new system and everything, but it sounds like we're actually heading in the right direction already and are well ahead of so many other districts in the state who may soon be looking to us as a model to create the alternative regulations.
Yeah, I mean, basically, the new bill will not allow you to suspend or expel for attendance, so the teams are really already in place. It's Susan, probably a teacher or one of her sister principals or a counselor, so the team does the recommendation, and I think we're carrying it well above what they're requiring.
And that bill also requires a good building meet and put a plan in place before we go to this. So we already have systems in place in the building for the response intervention process where those can happen. We have a data system that will document that so that when it does go to this docket, they'll have a documentation trail of the meetings that have been held and the interventions that they tried, so they don't reinvent the wheel.
Great, good job.
Nice job, thank you. This time, we'll move to legislative report, Michael?
You know, I don't have anything now, but I would maybe like to have a little bit more time at the upcoming meeting, just to kind of recap everything that happened in the last session and what, how we go forward.
Sounds good. We do not have a Butler Tech report tonight, so we will go to any reports from employee organizations, certificated and licensed? Report from school-related organizations. Under community comments, I have a request for one from Matt Dietzort, parent, discussing new construction.
Yes, I just had one question on the new construction that's dribbled. I know it did, it did brought up about a possibility of an access road over the bridge going towards Peacock as a possibility. Is that still a possibility that's being looked at? Is that on the table?
It's a tremendous possibility. We own that property. At our last board meeting, we did a presentation that talked about a traffic survey, and the traffic survey will be very key since the township is allowing CMHA to close John Rose and build their building. It will affect the traffic that's going to go out onto Banning Road. So what we're trying to do is look for an access point for buses outside the back because the school's going to go from an enrollment of 420 to 875 to 900.
Right.
So the bridge is necessary because that's a floodplain, so it will have to be big enough to go over that area and also have a walking path for students to go out the back.
Okay, so with it being a floodplain and everything, it is still a possibility?
Yes. Well, we're going over is the narrow end of the floodplain. There was a picture, and I'll be glad to send it to you, email if you remind me tomorrow. But it's a wide area toward the houses, and then it narrows in, so we would have to go over there. And Chris, anything you want to add?
No, we would basically span that creek controlled by the art of court.
Right. Okay, so I mean, it definitely, you know, it is So I mean, it definitely, you know, it is, you know, a possibility without, definitely, you know, wouldn't contribute to any of their flooding issues when they bring.
Oh, we thank you.
Right.
The Army Corps will now.
Right, yeah. I'm just making sure that's real clear. I wasn't sure if it was so much of an issue that it was off the table or anything.
No, we should.
We're also required to be plus that.
Right. Figured that was an assumption, but I was trying to, you know, make sure I wasn't sure if it was, you know, off the table, still on.
Still on.
Very important jobs. So, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we have certificated licensed personnel retirements and resignations. You will find five acceptance of certificated resignations, five acceptance of extra-duty resignations, and 11 acceptance of extra-duty procedural resignations. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certificated licensed personnel retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second, and are there any other questions? Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is a classified personnel item, retirements and resignations. You will find seven acceptance of classified resignations, one acceptance of classified substitute procedural resignations. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second for classified retirements and resignations. Any questions? Motion passes five to zero.
Next category is a fiscal item. It is vendor contracts. You will find five vendor contracts for approval. The superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education authorize the vendor contracts as listed.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second, and any questions on vendor contracts? Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is a fiscal item. It is for transfer, transfer of district-wide waiver fees from general fund into the uniform supply account to old schools harmless in the amount of $119,000, $119,098.84. Treasurer and superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the transfer as listed.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second, and is there any questions regarding the transfer? Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is a general business item. It is the donation by the Northwest Mighty Knights. Mighty Knights agree to donate $25,000 to be paid over the next 10 years to the Camelot Campaign in exchange for the use of the Northwest High School football field and certain facilities of the school district. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education accept the Northwest Mighty Knights' donation of $25,000 to the Camelot Campaign as per the attachment agreement.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second, and any questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you.
Yep.
Very generous.
Very generous, and I know if you haven't been by, the field's looking really good. Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is a certificated licensed personnel item. You will find one approval of initial administrative appointment, four approval of initial appointments, five approval of extended service contracts, two approval of change in status, several approvals of summer school certificated staff and curriculum development, and one resolution to suspend certificated staff contracts with applicable reduction in force provisions of the negotiated labor agreement. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certificated licensed personnel items as listed.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second, any questions?
Todd, I got a question on Aaron's, is that a 10-month contract or is that?
It's 215-day contract. Jo is back, doing well so far, but yeah. So she is due any day now, and I don't have a return date, but congratulations to her for that. But yes, like we said before, from here on out, anything will be reduced, and it's just one year.
Any other questions? Motion passes five to zero, and we're certainly glad to see Jo back.
Yeah, I saw his day the other night, he was really excited.
Good. The next item is a classified personnel item. It has one approval of resolution to recommend termination, one approval of initial appointment, one approval of classified substitute to be paid at various rates, one approval of substitute delivery service, one approval of summer custodial maintenance worker, two approval of leave of absence, four approval of change in status. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified personnel items as listed.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in second, any questions on the classified personnel items? Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is a curriculum and instruction item. It is an out-of-state and extended field trip request. The Colrain High School band is requesting permission to take 115 students to West Harrison, Indiana to participate in a band camp from July 25th until July 30th, 2016. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the out-of-state and field trip request as listed.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second, and any questions on the out-of-state and extended field trip? Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is miscellaneous, information only attached. You will find all our district handbooks and the summaries of what, if any, changes occurred. Please look them over, and if you have any questions, let me know, and we will go for a final approval at the next board meeting. Just so the audience knows, they get these in advance, their district policies for elementary handbooks, enrollment handbooks, K-3A grading, reading, and on and on and on. And the next one is a short one, that's superintendent's update. I just want Daryl to turn this over. It's a kind of a plan, we're working with Butler Tech, and it's really exciting. When we met in the fall and we got together as a group and did some team building, you guys talked about adult education, so Daryl's going to report on that.
So we've been working with Butler Tech, Scott Palmer, the executive director of the Adult Workforce Education, and Terry Bennett, who is their director of adult basic literacy education. And we are at a point where, starting in the fall, we're going to be able to be, start offering adult education classes through Butler Tech here at Colrain. So we will begin at Colrain High School, it'll be offered in their career center. It will, you'll be getting a memory and an understanding that will allow us to partner with them to do this. Beginning in July, we'll start publicizing and recruiting people for the program. We will be starting in the fall and September, offering a class called ABLE, which is the Adult Basic Education Literacy, which leads towards GED, and we'll be offering ESOL, which is the Adult English as a Second Language course. Both courses are free through Butler Tech for any community member, and the GED, they can actually get through Butler Tech a grant that will pay for everything except $10 toward their GED. So these will be started in the fall, will be six-week courses, we'll be publicizing that and getting that started. They're also going to continue to work on developing, getting the site approval for Corrin High School, so that they can offer tuition-based adult education classes and start offering things like CDL machining and things like that in the evening, so that our Butler Tech programs and all the equipment that we have during the day doesn't sit idle at night. Our parents actually will be able to get access starting in the next school year to tuition-based career education on our campus through Butler Tech.
Daryl, are they going to send literature out to just all the households or our districts, or how are they going to do that?
They're going to publicize, we're going to, through their website and their means, we're going to work through Paletta with a lot of the communication systems that we have in place and through our enrollment center, our schools, and publicize the flyers in that way. So we'll target the areas where we can. It's actually open to anyone, so if, you know, we communicate and get connected with Mount Healthy, North College Hill, you know, any adult, it would be accessible. It's not just for our community, it's just going to be based in our community.
But the exciting part is we're getting connected with the community. We're bringing adults in, they're having access to do things they haven't before. When they start bringing in some programs, hopefully creates jobs, just makes another reason to move back in our community.
Also, could be, I mean, I'm thinking way ahead here, but could be a step to maybe offering some community college-level courses as a partnership with the United States or something like that. And I'm thinking about this one, I was probably thinking of all down line, but.
But it's the expansion of that entire ability to wrap around our community and offer services within and around our community, support and develop and enhance the community we have.
About, oh, we had for a number of years, because I taught in it, we had a really vibrant, Bob Beers was the last czar commissioner of it when I taught, adult ed, everything from volleyball to history courses. I taught a course on the Civil War, and we had, I'll bet you, 40 courses at Corrin High School that you could take, German, Spanish, drafting, you name it. And the teachers were paid minimally. And I think I had 10, 12 students in my class, and it was a great thing, and it just sort of fizzled over the last 10 years. But it did get a lot of community involvement, and the volleyball had sometimes 30, 40 people, and it was a great thing. It's a good, good move to get this thing going.
Back in early 80s, I worked for Northwest, and I actually had an auto body class there while I was restoring my, my antique car. And that's why I welded all my fenders and everything. It was great. That's it.
Okay, at this time, community comments. Matt?
So I also wanted to thank the district for the presentation earlier on the Safe Council and everything. I was one of the ones that was in attendance at the symposium, along with, I think, there's about 20 parents in the parents group, and I know some of the board was there as well. So I think truancy is a great place to start. I think, you know, when you talk to a lot of kids that are in trouble and everything, I think truancy is where they started at, you know, led to other things. So if you can head them off there, that's where, you know, goes. I know you brought up, you know, was it 32 it was, or 34, or what have you, that didn't show, or for one reason or another, and may or may not have had to been referred down to, you know, downtown. But there's 140 cases that were heard, and without this program, you know, those 140 cases, but the majority of those would have been referred downtown, correct?
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's just, you know, incredible, you know, it's awesome.
The ones that did show missed the opportunity to fix the problem.
Right, yeah. But, you know, just, you know, that's 140 just from February to, February to June, right?
Yeah, we had 171, because 132 were in addition to 171. We actually heard 171.
100, okay.
140 were.
Were repeat ones. Right, so, you know, it's just a great program, and I commend you and thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to board members' comments. Chris?
Nothing for me tonight, Pam.
Okay, Michael?
Congratulations, our state champion, Malik Beverly.
Very exciting.
Yes, second that.
I just wanted to echo what Matt said about the safe program, and with Susan saying those six seniors probably would not have graduated if they wouldn't have been on a plan, and that is, in my eyes, that's the most important thing, is getting them on track so they can graduate and live on in life. But, yeah, and kudos to Malik for winning two state titles and a state runner-up, it's awesome. You know, all by himself, they finished third in the, for the team, in the state.
He was, he was three points out of being a state runner-up as a team.
Yeah.
It was pretty exciting.
So congratulations. Is he going to come and get recognized by?
Next board meeting.
Next board meeting?
I don't know, I'm still waiting for Mr. Watkins to give me his event and what place he wants to be. And once I get that, I can give him a runner-up to his family.
I got him.
Jim can probably give it.
I can too. I love my hair.
You probably got my speed dial, right?
Yeah, it was exciting. Bob?
A lot of exciting stuff tonight. I really, really appreciate what the team did in putting that program together, making Northwest School District a model for the rest of the state. It's, it's big, that's good for the district.
Could I share one story?
Uh huh.
Share one story about another one of Susan's students, very quiet young lady, was not in any kind of trouble, but she wasn't coming to school. And when she came in with her mother, who was on autism and very feeble, and finally got to the root cause of why she wasn't coming to school was because she had taken her mother to dialysis every week, and had to watch younger children, other grandchildren, children at home, and was holding down a job, and several other issues were gone on in her home life. And we were able to put some resources in place to help her. Unfortunately, her mother didn't pass the exam before the end of the school year, but she came to school every day. We were able to work out a plan, and Susan and many of the principals would comment, the kids are holding their heads higher, are coming to school, their grades are going up. I mean, they do have some success stories when they come back that second time. They were tardy once, where beforehand, they may have been out eight out of 20 days and tardy 14 of those days. And so the successes have just really been phenomenal. And you mentioned that truancy is the root cause of some issues, but in fact, it isn't. When they come into truancy courts and you begin to hear what their home lives are about, the drugs that are involved, either with the children or with the parents and families that they're living in, the households, and everything else they have around them. And we're able to put the supports that we have in place and that Dina has at her fingertips. She has only had to take one child who was not very respectful to her, and just shut it down right then and there and sent him down. But she does explain to the, to the students that if you don't become more successful at attending school, your mother will be behind bars for failing you send you. So she is able to play the good cop, bad cop, but I wanted you to know that the successes are just phenomenal. It's not just, oh, I better come to school. There are reasons they're not coming, and we're able to help and give some of them, but help the other. So it's really remarkable.
I think so many of these kids experience things that most of us can't even dream of. And the powerful statement of her being able to say, or someone saying to the kids, you know, Mrs. Smith thinks, you know, you, you know, you're special, we're giving you this opportunity, just that statement, what, what impact that can make on that student's life. It's just, it's amazing. And I know, you know, a lot, lot of us were frustrated in the, in the symposium and how everything happened and so on and so forth. Before you take a step back, and when, perfect example of everything happens for a reason, and maybe you don't know at the time, but what positive things have already come out of that is amazing. So, again, this, all of the reports tonight have, have been awesome. It's, it's been a great, great meeting.
I also want to thank Colrain Township administrators and trustees one more time for our lies and our plan, theirs and this whole district, over and over again, by allowing us to change those. Dina and her clerk sit up high. So it looks official, it is very official, which when people come in, it's very private, everybody else is waiting outside with the doors closed, you can't hear anything when you're outside, but the township has stepped up, their IT guy has been there to help us set up and look at any issues that we might have, because Dina is able to print out the plan and the release papers for the parents right there when they're with us. So kudos to Colrain Township again for coming to our aid and allowing us, the trustees chambers every Friday, to carry out this, this project.
I don't want to drag this thing out, but I did, I did want to say something about the, the two graduations, they were very, very good. The speakers were very good, the kids that were up there speaking were amazing, and it was, it was great to be part of that.
That was next, next on my list.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. And then just quickly, I just want to send our thoughts and prayers to everyone in Orlando, and hopefully, the ones that are in the hospital will be, will get better, and someday, maybe all this craziness will stop. But with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Okay, Chris? Motion passes five to zero. Meeting adjourned.
I had the sticky notes just deleted.
Yeah, what guy did last one? Yeah, what guy did last one?